Good afternoon and welcome to the ICC annual hearing. We're about to commence. We want to first kick it off to our Commissioner Keith Howard. It's his first hearing with us, but he certainly has been very actively involved with the ICC since he began. Commissioner Howard? You have to unmute Commissioner.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I want to thank everyone for being with us today. I know things are incredibly busy in our city, especially this time of the year. But it says a lot that you are here with us in person and remotely for today's ICC meeting on Youth Annual Public Hearing. My name is Keith Howard and I am the Commissioner for the Department of Youth and Community Development, DYCD. And as Commissioner of DYCD, I am also by designation Director of the ICC. The ICC is a New York City Charter mandated council that brings together the City of New York, youth, serving government agencies for purposes of collaboration and partnership. I'm looking forward to hearing directly from the public on issues, concerns, and support that they have to share for the city's vast portfolio of youth-serving government agencies. All the agencies are here with us virtually and they will introduce themselves to you shortly. I participated in my first ICC meeting this past September and appreciate the interest among member agencies to work together. I'm impressed by the high level of dedication and support exhibited for one another. The information sharing was on point with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the Administration for Children's Services, and DYCD highlighting their virtual portfolio of services for New Yorkers. While I was taking in the presentation, I asked myself, how can we as a city tap into all of these wonderful resources and utilize them to their fullest? As you know, our city's young people, families, and communities are facing unparalleled challenges as we emerge from the pandemic into an endemic. Additional obstacles seem to always pop up almost weekly. That is why Mayor Eric Adams appointed me Commissioner this past June and I am a product of the city and have devoted my life and 30 years of public service in my professional career. As you know, the mayor expects us to get stuff done. He expects us to work out of silos. He wants to enhance services for all New Yorkers and to maintain our distinction as being a premier city for all. With that in mind, I have tasked my team to go through, to go above and beyond to improve city service. They have responded well as the city workforce always rises to the challenge. At this time, I'm happy to announce that the ICC will reformulate in the coming weeks to be able to partner with other member agencies in real time as needed. As again, it's a designation and an instruction that was, you know, passed on by the mayor that he wants all city agencies to work together out of silos. The goal is to have a contingent or an appropriate member agency at the ready to deploy services and assist New Yorkers in need during a crisis. Similar to the Handle With Care Initiative, a multi-agency partnership between DYCD, the NYPD, the Chief Medical Examiner's Office, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the ICC will look to establish communication pathways to alert its members when a young person is at the scene of a traumatic event and in need of a wide array of services. It is clear to me that any young person that resides in New York is touched by various agencies. Thus, we all have a stake in the young person development. I am confident that by utilizing the City of New York's vast resources, combined with the city's tremendous workforce, we can in fact make a difference. Additional details will be forthcoming early in the new year. I anticipate that by the time we have a public hearing in 2023, this initiative will always be, this initiative will already be in place. I will be reaching out to all the ICC member agency heads to gain their support and together we will get stuff done. As for today, we have a public hearing and will be joined by young people, program representatives, and those interested in youth matters. I'm excited for the civic engagement opportunities and to hear what our guests would like to share with us. In addition to that, I want to highlight so far some of the achievements that has occurred throughout the city. And one of the achievements that I want to highlight is our Summer Youth Employment Program, SYEP. Kudos goes to the organizations, our community-based organizations, our partners. But I also want to shout out the city agencies who stepped up in a real way and had summer youth employment participants work in their city agencies. We reached historic numbers. And I'm hoping next year, as we roll out summer youth employment, that we can go up and above what we did this year. I also want to shout out NYPD for a record number of young people, 813 this past summer. And hopefully, we can do better than that as well. I'm looking forward to the work that we can do together, especially to advance and to provide safe space for young people and the work that we can do, you know, around engaging young people in employment opportunities far beyond summer youth employment. If you have city resources, vacancies, apprentice programs that DYCD can utilize and that we can connect with to create pathways for young people to employment within the city government. I charge you, I instruct you, I would love for you to work with us to be able to achieve that goal as you yourself have achieved those, the goal of working as a public servant. I now turn it over to Andrew Miller, who will share with you today's program. Thank you very much for being here and for your commitment. I look forward to all the possibilities that DYCD will be able to work with in your city agency. Thank you so much. Andrew?
Thank you, Commissioner, for those great words and for the terrific news. We really appreciate it. Before we begin the public session of this, I'd like to introduce Susan Patterson, who's going to do a little PSA on our Community Needs Assessment. Susan?
Thank you, Andrew. Every three years, we do the Community Needs Assessment. So we're here, we're doing it, and we need your help. So my coworker David is back at 1:23. He's going to drop some things in the chat regarding the QR code so that all city residents, I mean, all city residents can take the survey. It's critical. We also have paper surveys. So people need paper surveys. Again, look in the chat and we will be able to come out and collect them. It's vital. This, this survey is actually going to help other city agencies see what the issues are. So, so far, we have like over 20,000 surveys and we're still collecting because we have a lot of people in the city and we need the help. We need to know what the needs are. Your voice really counts. Lastly, I'm going to talk about recruitment. So some of the agencies here, we do recruit for our Neighborhood Advisory Board. We start recruiting at the age of 16. On up, we have vacancies throughout 41 neighborhood development areas. So please, in the chat, you'll see the application, you'll see the QR code. Encourage your young people to apply to the boards. But let me go back and say with regards to CNA survey, they can be as young as 14 years old to take the survey. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, for that. So now we're going to begin. So good afternoon and thank you for being here and thank you for those who are with us online. As you know, this is the Interagencies Committee and Council's first ever hybrid public hearing. The ICC was founded in 1989 and is the New York City Charter mandated and has promoted interagency collaboration on issues relevant to young people for over 33 years. Prior to the pandemic, all of our public hearings were in person and during the pandemic, we actually switched to being virtuals. So now I'm delighted that today represents the first time we're going to be able to do it both in person and virtually. So I thank you for that, Eduardo. So first, I want to begin by recognizing some people who have joined us. First, we're very thrilled to be joined by Youth Services Committee Chair, Chief of Staff, the Youth Services Chair, Stevens Chief of Staff, Kate Conley has joined us. Thank you. We want to thank Deputy Commissioner Darrell Rattrick, Denise Williams, and Susan Haskell for their support throughout the year. And we also want to thank the Deputy Commissioner Haskell's staff in particular, Paula Calby and Linda Woon for all their ongoing support and their outside side. I don't think they heard that, but they have been part of all the ICC's efforts for so many years. We also want to recognize the ICC Workgroup Chairs. So we have Tracy Thorne, fantastic, Sam Dawkins, Randy Scott, who actually left us. He's actually a Deputy Commissioner at Westchester County Department of Social Services. We congratulate him on that, but I understand that he's actually joined us today. So we welcome him. We all know we have representative each ICC member agency and we want them to introduce themselves. We're going to start in alphabetical order with the Administration for Children's Services. Stephanie Gindell. She's at Available Department for the Agent, Carolina Hoyas from the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Terry Denson and Anika Hilton. That's okay. For the Department of Corrections, we have Stacy King.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
From the Department of Education, we're joined by Michelle Rosa.
Good afternoon, everyone.
And from DEP, Lakeisha Broadshaw. Thank you, DEP.
Robin Sanchez in her place.
Thank you for coming. Frank Dwyer from the Fire Department. From the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, pleased to be joined by Dr. Leslie Hayes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. From Health and Hospitals, we're joined by Amir Holland. From the Department of Social Services, Eric Polino.
Good afternoon.
From the New York City Housing Authority, Lorraine Anton.
Happy Wednesday afternoon to everyone.
From the New York Law Department, Cecilia Williams. From the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, Melissa Paquette.
Good afternoon.
And Jesse Cravitt. From the Department of Parks, Paul Fontana. From the NYPD. Terrific, thank you. From the Police Department, Mariano Nunez.
Good afternoon.
From the Department of Probation, Eva Morales. From the Brooklyn Public Library, Kevin Kelly.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. From the New York Public Library, Caitlin Coleman-McGraw.
I am actually in her place. Hi, everyone. It's, I'm Susan Shi.
Thank you for being with us.
I'm going to get some, I need food.
Hey, can everyone mute themselves, please? And for the Public Library, Melissa Malanuk.
Hi, everyone. Happy to be here.
Great. Thank you all for coming here this afternoon. We will now begin the public portion of our program. Individuals will be called in the order that they registered. We're going to ask all testifiers to have three minutes each to speak. Please note all those that did not register prior to the hearing but would like to testify can do so after all registered testifiers have spoken. Those in person can complete a registration form to testify. Those of you online kindly identify yourself in the chat box with your full name and the organization, agency affiliation to be called upon. And so now we will begin. First, Henry Perez. He is with us here, so thank you, Mr. Perez. You may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Henry Perez. I'm the founder of We Will Do Sports as a nonprofit. Jesse? So my name is Henry Perez. I am the founder of We Will Do Sports located in Manhattan. It's actually a sports program that's been going on for maybe over 10 years now. We're not only sports programs, we actually get and focus on adverse youth. What that looks like is boys and girls doing sports programs. So right now, we're currently doing indoor, outdoor basketball clinics, tournaments. We also have mindset coaching, mental health coaching. So it's a little, it's a little different the way the sports program looks. We just noticed after COVID, we had to pivot some things and kids' mindset has just been a little different. So this is where we've been exceeding above and beyond. For us, I'm just here just to get some support, but also some real-time support. I think the Commissioner said it best. We're just a small little nonprofit out here just doing over 250 kids every summer. And this is just with just the help of the community. So I'm not going to take too much of the time, but again, I love the word in time, real time because these kids need it. These kids need it now. And again, I can be reached. I can be just some whichever way to kind of connect. I'll be more than happy to do so, but thank you for your time. Have a great.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Perez. I'd like to maybe after this hearing, you and I could meet. I'd love to hear more about your work. Next up, Michelle Matheson. Michelle, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Michelle Matheson. Is there anyone else who can look in?
Oh, no, you could just.
Okay. I'm for developments of right to the Sesame Flyers. And Sesame Flyers, if some of you guys don't know, has been around for four years. And we have been getting funding from the city since 1993, so it's been 30 years for me. We split Bush and Canarsie. We have two weekly programs, SYEP, Summer Youth Employment, a progress program, and the work that Department of Community Development does that gives us. You can't hear me?
Yes.
Oh, is that, oh, is that better? Yes.
Yes, people are complaining they can't hear.
Thank you. It helps support the culture. So a lot of people know Sesame Flyers from our participation in day-to-day, but we also support families and celebrate culture. All we're really sharing today is that we have been doing with DYCD over the last 30 years and I'm very grateful for that. We look forward to growing our partnership and relationship with DYCD and these agencies that are here. And we just really want to make sure that you guys know who Sesame Flyers is. For those who don't know us, they only know either our free access program or they may only know us from labor. We will be having some younger people speaking as well later on today. Hopefully, they can make it. I'm able to sit here. I hope that's enough. Oh, I see. Can you repeat Sesame Flyers and see the chat box on the side of the air? But I hope that this kind of explains who we are and who we hear from the young person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson. We love Sesame Flyers. They do terrific work in Brooklyn and we always like to hear about all of your ongoing work. We need more names. And I'm pleased, actually, with being joined this afternoon also by the Youth Services Chair Stevens. She was able to join us today. So welcome, Madam Chair. Okay, so now we have to start online. Of this? They're all here? And we, and we know that we're on? Yeah. So next, we want to call on Amarilis Green from the Civilian Complaint Review Board Youth Club. Ms. Green? Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm, my name is Amarilis Green. I will talk to you all and I can be helpful. And compliment. Now, if you're wondering what this stands for, we, like Mr. Perez, you need to find out. We are collaborating. This stands for Civilian Complaint Review Board. This is an independent, unique, municipal agency that investigates media issues and makes funding about.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, sweetie. I want to make sure that everyone can hear you. Just the audio is a little muffled. Are there two computers in your space by any chance?
No, only one.
Or it might be the headphones. You want to, we just want to make sure we hear you giving us a lot of important information. You want to try the audio from your computer instead of the headphones? That might help.
No, because I'm in a public space. At the moment, I'm upset, so I can just leave it. Um, we want, I mean, phone another to a headphone.
Yes, yes, of course. Please, this is important info. Take your time.
Someone else can go while I do this. It wouldn't be fair.
We can definitely wait. Yes, the chat room is interested in the conversation. So yes, if we can call someone else while you set yourself up. I have Jenna on my list. Is Jenna on the call? No, next I have Chelsea Jin from Brooklyn. Okay, I'll go down the list if you guys are here. Just pop up. Next person I have been, been Natia Simpson. And please let me know if I'm saying that incorrectly. I see Simpson on the call. Not sure if you're here. Oh, awesome.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. After my damn mom, this is not working. Hello, my name is Venetia Simpson and I'm from Flatbush Beacon Center Youth Council. Problems I have in my school are the vending machines are a little too pricey for certain students that aren't able to afford stuff like others. Another problem I have are gang violence and homeless people around my school community that we see in the morning or when we're leaving school late at night. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I have Jenna is ready to go. I'm sorry if you're having muting issues. I will unmute you.
Can anybody hear me?
Good, yeah.
Okay. So good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jenna Probinzato. I'm with, I'm with, I work with CME. I'm a youth transition specialist. CME is the Center for Independent and Disabled. Today's mission is to ensure full integrity, dependence, and equal opportunity for all people with disabilities by removing barriers to social, economic, and cultural and civic life of the community. The New York City School System is one of the largest school systems in the nation. The New York City School System has more than 200,000 public schools, public schools, public school students that are eligible for special education by by having IEP, IEP grants. Additionally, in our community department of education, the DOE site reports that in 2021 to 2022, there were 158,588 students in the New York School System with 20.20.20.6% of this number of the students with disabilities. These students have limited opportunities when it comes to choosing high schools that can support students with disabilities. Many parents find it difficult to connect with a school that can properly support their child. Another challenge that parents face is the actual implementation of of all their requirements that are listed on in their child's IEP. While there is support for parents from select agencies such as Advocates for Children and others in the New York City Department of, Department of Cases, System, knowledge and help of these students is still limited in terms of access. These are seemingly significant gaps for students and their families with regard to provisions and implications of all IEP requirements. One step that can be taken to improve this is by providing parents of a list of resources their child's first IEP meeting in eighth grade, the eighth grade year. Prep for high school needs, needs this opportunity. Having a conversation with your child about their IEP accommodations is important in their self-growth and self-awareness. Actively engaging them in this process is important. Middle school and high school is when we all first start developing self-identity. Helping students with disabilities gain this identity before high school can greatly help them in the high school transition process. A second step and needs to be looked at in this process of enrollment into the school for students with IEP requirements. This process as of now is difficult for many parents to navigate and CME advocates for the streamlining of this process. One suggestion in regard, in this regard is to have a centralized site where parents can plug in their student's IEP information and are able to easily access which schools can support their child's needs. The same goes for programs and resources that students with disabilities need at high school transitioning. While the New York City DOE site has information on a post-graduation transition, this information can be made more easily accessible. For example, a connection and knowledge to resources like CME's Youth Transition Program should be more accessible for parents and students to access. Ideally, we recommend a site where youth can search for community programs they would like by category. We can include, make an inclusive and accessible system for youth to find the programs would be beneficial for all. Such a system may better link to all community-based resources that would help youth in need as their families and service providers. Then it really is that it's the duty of the ICC to target and optimize the services for our youth, including those for children with disabilities. New York City has a vast amount of youth service across the five boroughs. However, knowledge of these programs is not well-known. During the past few years with the COVID pandemic and the reduction of in-person events, some of these events have gone away or have dropped in levels of participation. As we all have become aware, distant learning can, is difficult for students with disabilities. We recommend a party on the reincorporation of in-person events for students with disabilities and have their needs properly met. Students with social needs, students. Students with social need, students that need social supports can speak with one another after events and even possibly plan to go other events or discuss and share your services that they know of. The sense of community has been clinically lacking through disabled student population um, of lately. Additionally, in-person events and aid and collaboration amongst varying services agencies as from a networking, which helps to remove barriers and silos in order to better serve community at large. CME hopes that this council supports the notions of increased access to resources and improved sense of community amongst the disabled students of New York City. We advocate for true access, free appropriate public education as outlined in the Individual Disability Education Act of 1990, and believe that the student, the state, uh, the stated action steps could provide necessary progress toward that goal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
No, thank you for providing your feedback. Um, and I'm glad to see that our other participants have worked on their audio and are back in the mix. Um, so I'm going to call you guys in three, and then you can go in that order. Um, so am I saying this correctly? Am I released? Am I released? I probably butchered it. Can you unmute? Let me, huh, of course. We are recording. I think I got it. There you go. You should be able to unmute. Um, and then we'll have Jenna and Chelsea. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Much better. Thank you.
So, blessing means all. Thank you for having me here. My name is Amarilis Green. I'm a 12-year-old Youth Advisory CCRB Council member. Now, if you do not know what CCRB means, CCRB is the Civilian Complaint Review Board. It deals with municipal. I'm sorry. It's an independent municipal agency that investigates, mediates, hears, and makes fundings about NYPD misconduct. On another note, the Youth Advisory Council, which I'm a part of, is a working committee consisted of young leaders like myself who are focused on criminal justice concerns along with wanting to provide solutions to improving policing issues such as police brutality and wrongful arrests, in which commit, commit this and the public throughout. Not to mention, I enjoyed being a part of the YAC. We call it for short, as I was amongst my peers who believe in making the world a safer place for the next generation with the minimal amount of criminal activity or harm to others. I would also love for the Youth Advisory Council to work together with Assembly Member Brian Cunningham, try to bill and have it signed and enacted for about criminal justice betterment of police and public relations crime and police brutality. And one day, I hope that the Youth Advisory Council can break down this blue wall of science between law enforcement not to challenge each other's misconduct because that is not correct at all. And I'm excited to announce that the Civilian Complaint Review Board's Youth Advisory Council applications are open. The Youth Advisory Council is the Council of Young New Yorkers, as I stated, who are committed to criminal justice issues and stuff like that. So, applications are open to New Yorkers ages 10 to 18 years old. So, I really hope you guys come join. The deadline is Tuesday, January 31st, 2023. Video and audio statements can be submitted via link in the applications. You would have to please describe to us why you would be an ideal member for the CCRB Youth Advisory Council. Elable acupins can go to the Civilian Complaint Review Board's website, and it'll be right there. Boy could look up Youth Advisory Council applications, and it'll pop up as well. Thank you. Have an amazing time. I'm so appreciate you having me here, here, and I hope everyone gets their statement heard and can testify and speak out for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. So glad we were able to hear you clearly. Very important points. We have Nena. Uh, we have Nena, and we also have Chelsea next, so please make sure to turn your cameras on. I'm mute. Nena, sorry. Sounds like Jenna, but Nena.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you see me? No?
Yes, we can. Hear you loud and clear.
All right, great. How's everybody doing? Thank you so much. My name is Nena Uguomo. I am the current Executive Director of a House on Beekman, representing the Boogie Down South Bronx. And we have been for the last 10 years providing free holistic, high-quality uh, early childhood education and after-school programming for middle school and high school youth here in Mott Haven. Um, right now, I'm actually in the programming, and it's happening right now. We're waiting for our, our middle and high school students to, to come. And we have a holistic offering of after-school programs from the arts to drama to cooking. Literally, our, our kids are growing their own vegetables right now. Uh, they have their own lettuce that should be finished and ready to eat uh, by next week. Uh, we also have financial literacy and entrepreneurship, investing, uh, lots of different programming offered, and we want to serve the community. So if you know any kids in the Mott Haven area, we're right off of Third Avenue, 149th Street, um, right by St. Mary's Park, please send them our way. High school students, send them our way. And yeah, and I'm also the, the founder and board member of Student Dream, which has for the last 10 years also provided a, taught black and brown youth age 16 to 24 to build wealth through personal finance, investing, and entrepreneurship courses. We actually have one of our young people here to share about her experience of learning how to build a financial plan and publishing her own original song and getting to go to Carnegie Hall, meeting Commissioner Cuomo, Lori Cuomo, and doing a lot more. So, really want to see more of that. We have programming happening throughout the city. We have worked with uh Summer Youth Employment Program, Work, Learn, Grow, and uh, schools, charter schools, public schools, uh, high schools across the city. I'm really helping young people get to their first dollar of wealth, uh, learn how to pay off debt, build their credit, buy a house, invest in the stock market, get high, high-paying jobs, and really create a vision for their life and their money. So, it's been really exciting. Thank you all for the work you do, and we just want to work with more kids, collaborate with all these different agencies. Um, so really happy to be here.
Thank you so much. That's really exciting work. And again, I'd like to talk to you um, after this hearing about how we could uh work together. Next one to call up, Aleah Gilory-Nickens? Oh, okay. Welcome.
Hello.
Let's just take a little, yeah.
Hello, um, my name is Aleah Gilory-Nickens. I want to first thank the Society of Justice Intervention and Sesame's organization for inviting me here to speak. I'm currently the campaign organizer at Youth Represent, which is an nonprofit organization that provides free legal services for young people ages up to 25, and we also work on policy that help young people in the criminal justice system. Um, I was asked to speak about some passions and hopes I have for young people and what I think that we need. I'm 20 years old, so I would consider myself a young adult. Um, I feel like the first thing that we need is more opportunities, especially in our community. I feel like we're almost destined to do like when we're quick here when we go through our public school systems, the curriculum, taking over, so it's going to help us for the future. We don't get taught financial literacy. We don't get taught how to prepare for internships, how to prepare for real work, real jobs. We don't get taught how to code switch professionalism, things like that. And I feel like that's very important in that summer. Some of the things that we need, starting in our communities, starting in our public schools, in community centers, investing in communities, investing in programs that directly help young people such as Youth Represent, such as adults, such as Society of Justice Intervention. I also started my own organization called Coalition of Passionate Youth. They provide mutual aid to communities, um, and try to directly help young people, and I feel like it's important to support those groups that are on the ground doing the work without any funding, without any help or support, because those are the ones that are really being able to um, connect with the people in the community. Um, and I think the most important part right now, we're seeing like the tip, high tip online. Um, and I feel like the most important thing is to address these issues holistically and stop over criminalizing young people. Um, stop just thinking that the answer is to send them to jail and throw away the key and lock it away because that's not helping anyone, especially our young people, but to start believing in them. We're currently working on a campaign called Youth Justice and Opportunities Act, which would do exactly that. Put hope back into our young people and create opportunities to find a job, apply for housing, apply for school without a criminal conviction. It'll seal their record so they can do that. It'll give them all alternatives to jail so that you get a program that will help them rather than just sending them to jail with like higher than the risk of them going back to jail. So those are some things to keep in mind. Those are some things that I think that are important for young people. My name is Aleah Gilory-Nickens.
Aleah, that's amazing work you're doing. We want to learn more about it. And what are you after this hearing? We're going to have a lot of follow-up after this, and we want to learn more about that. So, next on the list from the New York City Health and Hospitals Youth Leadership Council, Xena Burgos. Is Xena online?
Well, we had Chelsea's must be next.
Oh. Okay, Chelsea. What is Chelsea's last name, please?
Jean, Jean.
Jean, okay.
Jean, Chelsea J. Flatbush Beacon.
Flatbush Beacon Center. Okay, that's. They're muted.
Hi.
Hello?
Hello?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chelsea, and I am a member of. I am from Parkside Preparatory Academy, and I'm in grade eight. Issues I will be talking about are construction and vending machines. One big issue that happened around the school is the construction. Construction outside has chemicals and burning fuels which are unattractive. Construction moves at nighttime. What it's called, the chemicals and there's no loud things happening. I'm now moving on to school vending machines. A lot of people love the school snacks that's in the vending machines, but can't purchase the snacks. Hopefully because it's usually $1.50 and nobody's really in the care around quarters or cents. So we should really update the school snacks for somebody that are tired. And I wanted to move to the bar, and I hope you all have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next up, we'd like to introduce Xena Burgos from the Health and Hospitals Youth Leadership Council. Ms. Burgos.
Hi, everyone. Um, me and my partner, Avani, we're from New York Health and Hospitals Youth Leadership Council, and today we will be addressing the issue of substance abuse in our schools, specifically around marijuana and nicotine. And my partner, Avani, will highlight the problems that we see every day in our schools.
Some frequent problems that we see every day in our schools are drugs being sold to minors, selling marijuana, vape, and cannabis-infused foods in our schools, vaping or smoking in schools, peer pressure from others to take part in drug use, using marijuana as coping, as a coping mechanism due to home, personal, or academic stressors, and glorifying vaping and or smoking marijuana on social media. And I've seen these issues have effect on, have effects on multiple people throughout my life, but one person that stood out to me in particular was my friend from freshman year in 2019, who always did well in his studies, and he has good relationships with his teachers, friends, and family. But unfortunately, he struggled with his mental health, which led him to start vaping. During the pandemic, his mental health worsened, which led him to start smoking marijuana too. He began slacking in his schoolwork, and he frequently argued with his teachers, family members, and even myself. In our junior year, he developed cannabis hyperemesis syndrome, which is a syndrome caused by long-term usage of marijuana that causes excessive vomiting, nausea, abdominal pain, and frequent visits to the ER.
From here?
To this day, his mental and physical health continue to decline, and although we barely talk anymore, I still care about him tremendously, and I wish that he could see the long-term social, emotional, and physical effects that his nicotine and marijuana use has had on him and how it has impacted others around him. Now I'll be passing it back to you.
Anyone who wants to testify, please raise your hand so we can acknowledge them. And we also have two other testifiers we're waiting for uh, that is supposed to get online around four o'clock.
I believe Naomi is back on the call. Nicole, I also have. Nikima, am I saying that correct? Those are the three folks that I have on my list. Oh, she said Xena is not finished. I'm sorry. It was the mute. Sorry, for the technical difficulties.
Um, so to continue, starting sophomore year, friends of mine had been charmed with the addicting effects that came with smoking marijuana and nicotine. Once we got back to school after COVID, they had begun to skip class and go inside of the bathrooms to start smoking or the intake of cannabis-infused foods. Often they did this possibly like three days per week, and not aware of the serious effects, they continued this pattern and became addicted. Now we're in junior year, and they're still enamored with these substances, and instead have tried to start harder substances in order to feel a better heart. Those in my school often see the kids smoking, but they often choose to ignore it, and there's not enough teaching about this topic for them to understand or discipline for them to stop. Moving on, I will now be speaking towards possible solutions towards ending substance abuse within our schools. Regarding short-term solutions, they um, contain encouraging and teaching students about the mental and physical effects of drug usage from an early age before they're even exposed to them. Another one would be implementing healthy coping mechanisms slash strategies into learning so they don't turn to drug abuse. Regarding the long-term solutions, we um, we said training teachers and assistant teachers as well as many other staff members who frequently interact with students to recognize symptoms or behaviors of any past trauma or conflicts that may lead to the use of marijuana and nicotine. Um, thank you for listening to our presentation and what we had to say. We thank you a lot for letting us be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the teamwork, ladies. Love to see it, working together. Um, the next two people that we have on our list, and again, I just dropped in the chat box. If you'd like to participate, please sign up. Uh, we have Nicole, Naomi, and Nikima.
Hi, I'm wondering if it's me, Noemi. I'm not sure if there's a Naomi in the chat, but um, if not, uh, my name is Noemi, and I am a community advocate um, here to support the youth uh, and everything that's happening. I represent Washington Heights area, and, and um, I'm just here to listen out and bring it back to the community board meetings that we have um, and District Six as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we got to see you. Thank you. Uh, we have Nicole still on the call? Nicole, unmuted. So, yes, are you able to? Oh, it says Edison Youth Recreation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Nicole, a founder of the Edison Youth Center. Uh, just a backstory, we're a prevention um, program. Um, I started this program because my brother and I, we kind of grew up in the same home. However, he got led astray, and it just didn't end well for him. So I'm really. So I'm really passionate about this program. A long story short, we started serving, um, the Brooklyn area. And we're recently new during the COVID, we went to the park, started doing services. And we found out that a lot of school required our services. However, uh, because we were fairly new, we didn't have the, um, the funds to accommodate some of the requests that we had from the school. So, um, I wanted to testify to see if we could get more real-time support. Uh, because a lot of schools need the program. Like I said, it's a prevention program. We also focus on recreational sports, uh, mindfulness and just kind of bringing kids back to being kids without, you know, thinking about the reality of what's really going on as far as, you know, recovering from COVID, the recent violence in the city. We just kind of bring them back in that safe space where they can talk. They could have, you know, playtime and just kind of reset and bring them back on the level they need to be on so they could be more engaging in the classrooms. And, uh, we have been partnering with other different schools, but we need more funding and we need more support. So it could probably be like a blueprint for the schools. Um, yeah. Oh, no, we don't have a physical location. So that's why we've been going around and partnering with different locations. But if we had like more real-time support, we could probably not only just visit one and two schools, but all the school have access to the information that we're given, the one and two schools that we have been able to partner with in the past. So just more support. Um, is required just to get the word across the board to prevent, uh, these children from like, you know, trying to come back from something that they're already far too long down the line to get. Because if you take, say somebody is, you know, drugs or smoking, you guys mentioned earlier, to take away that you have to replace it with something that they are actually interested in. So yeah, we, we just need more support with that to just help us, you know, reach all the children before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. And after this, we should also get together and discuss about, um, the commissioner's vision for allowing, uh, smaller organizations to work with our larger CBOs to share space and resources. Next, I see Jaclyn Tacco-Rante. Has her hand raised? T A C O. You may begin. There's a sound issue.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Jaclyn Tacco-Rante. I'm the executive director for the New York City Center, which is based here on the North Shore of Staten Island. I have with me also MC Milk. He's one of our award-winning instructors. Um, this is the first of its program, um, that was launched in the fall of 2021. And we focus primarily with young adults, um, in high school. Teaching them about podcasting, video editing. And so this is my first time joining. Um, I also wear another hat. Sitting on community board one as a participant, member, community advocate. And so very similarly to other organizations that are on here. Our organization, it's the first of its kind and it's grand spanking new. And the challenge that we're having is that numerous, um, school districts around New York City, along with different schools, high schools around Staten Island, have asked us to bring our program um, into their facilities and as many, just like y'all, um, limited funds, resources. So we're asking really more for guidance, um, and structuring the program properly. Um, but also to be able to have sustainability and to expand. So we're really here just to listen and to properly introduce ourselves because we'll be, we'll be here for the long haul. So. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I want to learn more about it because the commission actually does have a vision about connecting young people to careers in film and movies and television. So thank you. Okay. And next we have Greg.
Oh, we actually have one young lady before that.
Hello. Am I heard? Can you hear me? Oops, sorry. I can't really have my, uh, photo on right now because I'm trying to get ready for work, but. Hi, my name is Nikima. I am here testifying on behalf of Student Dream. I really want to just give flowers to and shout out the program and Nana Uguomo. I've personally been a music creator since early childhood, but I did not have the chance to publish my music until working with Student Dream, which I found via the Neon Arts Program, uh, via Carnegie Hall. Student Dream and Nana herself have provided nurturing in the space to heal anxiety, um, because, you know, artists be going through it. But also a place to have accountability along with practicality. Uh, there was a balance in knowledge instituted that instantly elevates its participants. And I only can ima- not even imagine, I hypothesized that with more funding, since Nana is just one human. If she had more funding to hire those that she, um, could, you know, just have help her, including some students, because I know she's interested in internship programs and things like that. This could become a national force. I mean, we know artists deserve compensation and teaching us those tools will help us from starving for years to come. Nana really hit, hit the jackpot honestly with this program and even just herself as a human. She has a wealth, a plethora of knowledge that continues to assist anybody she comes in contact with. I personally was assisted by her with asking about ways to potentially buy my own house one day because I did not know who else to come to to ask about financials or things like that. Seeing a black femme doing the darn thing and, you know, being able to empower and teach us that we can make the money we want, we can have the lives we want. I just immediately felt empowered to ask her, you know, for that personal goal of, of mine, which is like beyond even Student Dream, actually the core and the essence of Student Dream, to just be able to say, Nana or Student Dream, I have this thought, I have this vision. I don't even know if it's in your scope, but can you help guide me? And her guidance has just done wonders for my own personal life. So I'm very grateful for Student Dream, for Nana, and truly hope to see more to come. So thank you. That's my little testimony and I hope everybody has a great rest of the day. Shout out to all the groups and orgs here. I'm Nai. Bye.
Thank. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg. Nice to meet you guys. I'm the owner of Long Island Webmaster and I'm the vice president of the New York Arm Wrestling Association. I'll put the link in the chat for Long Island Webmaster. It's the number one webmaster company in terms of traffic in the United States. We're a website management company. That means we deal with things such as website repair, SEO, social media, website design, hosting, webmaster classes, streaming, graphic design, branding, e-commerce. Uh, specifically with the New York Arm Wrestling, we handle their pay-per-views. We handle their marketing. I'm an owner within it also. I'll post a link to the New York Arm Wrestling, which is a sports league in New York only. So we cater to arm wrestlers and we want to expand to the city to find more athletes. So we know that there's a need for the kids to become athletes. So why not become an arm wrestling champion? For example, we print out tickets for events, like in two weeks, we have the International Big Apple Grapple, the oldest arm wrestling tournament in the United States, the forty-fifth one created in nineteen seventy-seven. We have our sponsors in the back, so we're covered with the money part. You know, you see me right there, Long Island Webmaster. We have over fifteen sponsors in total. So what we're trying to do is create more athletes. I could show you my screen if you want. I guess we'll pop the desktop if I have permission. I don't know if you guys can see my screen. Maybe, possibly.
Yes.
So this is the New York Arm Wrestling site. So I'm trying to build more athletes. We have a ticket service, a tournament service, a training club. And we are promoting all kinds of businesses and we're bringing money in to help promote athletes and pay them. We have gyms, we have clothing companies. We're on the news, ABC News. We were just on CBS Sports. I just posted a picture of Mayor Bloomberg with our founder in the chat. Because the mayors used to always arm wrestle every year at the Big Apple Grapple and Eric Adams and Bill de Blasio are the only ones that haven't. Every mayor since nineteen seventy-seven has arm wrestled in our tournament, except the last two mayors, which is a travesty. It's been on ABC News, Pix eleven, CBS, all the mainstream in New York. There's over a thousand publications and articles online. The events we have for the year, we have twelve championship events lined up for New York, specifically in New York City. So, and these events have been going on for forty-five years consecutively. Upstate Championship, Long Island, Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens Championship. You know, the Staten Island, New York City, New York State, International Big Apple Grapple, The American Dream, which is in East Rutherford. We just did an event at The American Dream. So in July seventeenth, right with BarberCon, this, we were right next to BarberCon at the same time. So we want to bring these kids into the organization and create athletes because now we're offering pay-per-views, we're offering streams. You could watch it online, you could register for an account. And it's like, I have a really, really good idea to help everyone make money and we have a higher revenue split than any other sport. Where seventy-five percent goes to the athletes and it's not covering the cost or anything that we have to incur. Twenty-five percent of those that cost revenue, venues, sponsors, ticket production. So we have a really, really good idea here that we're producing for forty-five years and it's coming into fruition.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, next up, we're very pleased to be joined by our friends from the New York Civil Liberties, um, Teen Activist Program. So we have Sarah E. and, uh, Brandon Huggins. Sarah E.? Sarah E. Fiero. Is that correct? So that way people online could hear you.
Hello, my name is Sarah E. I am a senior at Union Square Academy for Health Sciences. I joined the New York Civil Liberties Union, Teen Activist Project, as an activist to educate myself about civil issues and how I can make a change. Today, I am going to talk about the problem with policing and scanning in schools. Policing is present in schools that are majority students of color. Why is that? A microanalysis shows that students of color make up eighty-eight percent of total enrollment in schools that have scanning. Having scanning and policing in schools is invasive, can lead to targeted events and even be the cause of harmful interaction. All ending in loss of valuable learning time and targeting students of color. Yet the police claim it has nothing to do with race. I'm going to share my personal experience with policing and scanning in school, which I'm lucky to not have been observed by other students. As a young female student requiring public transportation to and from school, it is quite frightening. It is uncomfortable and nerve-wracking because of the unfortunate conversations with grown men who have approached me within a corporate environment, allowing me to close. As a precaution, I carried pepper spray, as one does in New York City. However, in my school, it is not allowed due to the daily scanning. In my junior year of high school, I carried my pepper spray in my book bag for almost a whole school year. Then suddenly towards the end of the year, the school security officer noticed my pepper spray and confiscated it. I thought that would be the end of it. I understood the possible danger of bringing a weapon to school, but I didn't because I needed to protect myself outside of school where the real danger was. My whole future could have been ruined because the officer decided to debate whether I would be suspended or write a juvenile report. Imagine a student trying to protect herself from real danger and a police officer thinking it is entertaining to threaten a child's future. Yet down the block, a predominantly white school doesn't have to worry about one stupid TSA every morning. I wonder why. My life was about to be stained with a report that will label me as a villainous. Going to school should be a comforting environment. It should be perceived as a second home for students. Maybe even possibly a first home where they have support. Somewhere where I shouldn't have to be date where my safety matters most. However, attending schools is the opposite. School police at my school have little to no respect for us students. They have a negative attitude towards us students who are just young adults, not delinquents. Instead of trying to be understanding or respectful, they automatically become unfair and disrespectful. I now understand why students lose interest in attending school. It is because they feel judged and cornered. Policing in schools doesn't keep students who act enough or keep them safe. But policing in schools is salaries and numbers of students ending up in prison. So instead of employing police in schools, who is predominantly black or Latinx, you should employ more school counselors, social workers and invest more money in restorative justice programs. After all, de-escalating an issue and trying to find a solution is more important and beneficial for students' mental health and safety compared to the criminalizing system that we employ.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah E. Next, Brandon Huggins.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brandon Huggins. I am a senior currently attending City High School for high school students. And today I'm here with the New York Civil, New York Civil Liberties Union, Teen Activist Project, to tell you how policing in schools affects black, brown and Latinx students. Black, brown and Latinx students are criminalized and stereotyped every day in schools. I personally, I have personally experienced this my whole life. I grew up in a low, low-income neighborhood, neighborhood in Brooklyn, New York, raised by a single parent. And in school, I was labeled a troublemaker, a person who had no home training and I could name plenty more, plenty more comments that have been made by teachers and principals. One thing, one thing I can say though, it wasn't only me who experienced being stereotype, stereotyped in a negative way. Living in a low, low-income neighborhood, it seems like most, me and my peers were destined to be pushed to the criminal legal system. In the second grade, school police put handcuffs on me and another student for doing as a second grader do. Why would you ever think to do something like that to a second grader, knowing it can traumatize the student for the rest of their life? Growing up in Flackburg, Brooklyn, seeing handcuffs on police officers was a regular and regular, regular to me. And the thought, the thought of jail sounds quite fine to me, especially since some of my family members and, and family friends were in jail. At, at the moment, I fear for my life thinking I would never see my mom again. And I always question myself, am I a gay member? Well, I, well, I damage the threat that they use for handcuffs on me. Throughout, throughout the rest of my school year, I was isolated in a room being checked on by a security guard that year. Solitary confinement was a regular occurrence for me. This being me, so why we need less policing in schools? I'm, I moved to Long Island a couple of years later after, after the situation and schools situation and schools out there were totally different, about two security guards with about five counselors who, about two security guards with about five counselors who are able to attend each student and help them with their wants and needs. And it was clear to me that I wouldn't be able to come to school and not be stereotyped like how, how I was looking before. This shows you how low-income neighborhoods are affected and how, how schools that are highly populated with black, brown and Latinx are targeted. My guidance counselor helped me, my guidance counselor helped me with so many of my issues inside and outside of school, which had an outstanding, outstanding impact on my life. I've gotten into more activity, become a better man, and it also helped me out, out, help me out, out, uh, relationships, uh, with relationships at home. Guidance counselors have been more impactful on my life and school safety officer afterward. And generally for students, students' lives in and out of schools. I'm urging you to demand for more funding and support for guidance counseling and social work in this school. Let's start focusing on, on our needs and set up thinking of us as strengths.
Thank you, Brandon. Next we have Monae Smith. Monae, welcome, Monae. You're in person. Good to see you.
Hello, everyone. Very small thin. Um, guess I'll just start with the introduction. Sure. Uh, my name is Monae Smith. Um, I live in Brooklyn, New York. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of someone who is very concerned in issues regarding youth, someone who has seen issues in youth, um, from our history, leads issues to the modern day. And someone who also studies the criminal justice system and works for reducing crime and incarceration through focusing on youth. Through that lens and passion, I have an organization, um, newly based in New York called societal justice intervention, where we basically work on criminal justice, criminal justice reform through reducing, um, primary participation by focusing on the issues that cause it. Um, I'm a criminologist. I'm a criminologist personally, so the issues that cause it are mainly ages fourteen to twenty-four, you know, our youth communities. Because those are the issues when we have young people who, you know, don't know what they want to do with their life, who are struggling to find really a means to an end. And that's when they most likely have the presence rational of the legal system. So that's my organization. I also work with Sesame Fires based in Brooklyn. A lot of that work is work on that same lens in terms of helping youth find, you know, their placement in the world and in society. So there's a few issues regarding youth that I wanted to speak about today. I didn't have anything written down, so I'm just going to speak from the heart in one spot. I think one major issue that I just want to start off with is the matter of in-school suspension and dealing with youth that we often label as troubled youth. A lot of times in our public education, we have issues where at a very young age, kids are stuck into certain cycles, in certain tracks. Those tracks determine the rest of their life. We label kids at a young age, oh, this student is troubled because they're not paying attention. Oh, this student is troubled because they're acting out of class. Oh, this student is troubled when they're talking back to their teacher. But a lot of times we fail to realize that these are the students that we need to be putting the most work in and the most funding in. And instead of doing that, and instead of working with the student fostering their needs to really figure out what's going on, why is the student causing issues, we instead put them in a cycle and a track that leads to incarceration, such as suspension and expulsion. And once you remove a student and a young person from the very means, which could have helped them, you already lost. And then we want to complain when we have high numbers of participation. We want to complain when youth are resulting to illegitimate means, we call illegitimate means of income, such as scanning, doing illegal things, because we haven't given them any other tools. So I think investing in our schools, but investing in our schools through programming means is one thing that's very important. We need to work with these young people to find something that they're passionate about, which is one thing that our organization working on now, Sesame Fires, in terms of finding something that they're passionate about and locking them in with that at a young age and not having labels in terms of troubled youth and automatically creating a schema that this person is a bad person, because at the day, we're all people. Another major issue is mental health. And not as a criminologist, basically, in criminology, we study what causes crime. So as a criminologist, since COVID, you know, we've all seen a rise in crime. A rise in crime, but specifically crime of violence, the crime of passion, as we call it. And as a criminologist since COVID, I've realized that in our youth, particularly, that we've seen a large issue when it comes to mental health. That is something that's largely unrecognized. Yes, we talk about mental health when it comes to people in the streets and homeless people. People with substance abuse always have, you know, triggered mental health issues. But our young people, they've only been in this world for less than twenty years. And their world, as I know, has completely shaped and completely, you know, blindsided with a major event. And in that, you know, a lot of them became disconnected to school. A lot of them weren't able to focus doing the virtual things. And a lot of them are going through issues at home. We've seen a lot of at-home issues, a lot of family issues. So really focusing on mental health is another major component that I would say. So mental health and a lot of that, like the previous person said, is guidance counselors. A lot of college, high school guidance counselors mainly, you know, help with transfers, or they help students who are troubled, or, you know, they help with the over academic. But we need mental health counselors in all schools, specifically our public education. And public education, you know, is something that we're currently talking about befunding, but it's that we cannot complain about issues of criminal justice and issues of crime while simultaneously stopping the things that alleviate crimes, such as investing in our youth, investing in programs for our youth, investing in public education. And also, more importantly, investing in the community organizations that provide services to these youth is another major factor. So those are the key points that I said today. I could go on and on, but those are the main things.
Thank you, Miss Smith. And I didn't, the name of your organization, because I want to learn more about it.
Yeah, we're called Societal Justice Intervention. Our mission is alleviating issues in our criminal legal system through remapping justice in society.
So Eduardo, we have a long list of folks we want to meet up with after this public hearing. And so thank you for that. And you'd be happy to know that our commissioner and the mayor are really committed to mental health services and putting that component of services across DYCD's program areas. So you'll be seeing that in the weeks and months to come. Next, we have, sorry, Michael Yao from Manhattan Youth. They're online. Y O W.
Yeah, I'm leaving.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Glad to be here on behalf of Manhattan Youth. Bob Townley, Executive Director, wasn't able to make it, but he definitely wanted you to know that he's with us while we're here. Manhattan Youth is an organization that works with thirty different schools in Manhattan. We provide after-school programming as well as a downtown community center where we also provide after-school programming. But in relation to DYCD, we are in twenty-four different schools. And we are definitely excited and appreciative of the partnership that we have. I definitely want to spend most of this, most of my time here really listening to what the young people have to say. But I just wanted to, wanted to put out there that Manhattan Youth is definitely excited about the work that we're doing. We're excited about the partnerships that we have. We think that after-school has been a tremendous opportunity for us to be in the lives of students and families, particularly during COVID. We were excited to still be able to offer things remotely and to be able to keep some of the relationships with young people still going. So we are definitely advocates for the work that's being done in the after-school sector. One of the things that we are, that we see on the horizon that we just like to bring to the table is just to remember that we do operate with many partner organizations and those partnerships are very important. Sorry, I'm in a school building. Those partnerships are very important, but at times it's very hard for the agencies administratively when we are reporting to or following DYCD, DOH, OCFS, that one of our hopes is that some of this stuff can be streamlined, so there's not many duplication of expectations sometimes. And the second thing that I think we just want to bring to the table critically is that we try to serve as many students as possible. And many times, in many of our sites, we are definitely over capacity. So trying to figure it outside of the box, what are the ways in which we can still support a high number of students that are beyond the capacity that we've sort of partnered with through our, through our funders. So those are the two critical things to us. I know that those are important things to other people. And like I said, we are glad to be doing this work alongside everybody here. And we continue to hope that people are able to maximize what they can in this upcoming year. So thank you for the time and I look forward to hearing from other people.
Thank you. Next up, we have Larry Muhammad.
Hey, guys. How's everything?
Great.
My name is, of course, Larry Muhammad. I'm the father of Aleah Guillory-Nickens. How you guys doing?
Good.
Founder of Airbnb Academy, based in Harlem, New York. What we do is simple. We've determined that there are essential tools that's necessary to help prepare our youth to repel some of the, how can we put it? Some of the distractions. For example, our program offers four units of training, starting with vocational, which is construction technology. So it'll cover ten and a half weeks over two days per week. And we offer HVAC. Let me get it right. Plumbing, sheet rotting, and painting. So what'll happen is, long story short, after, after the ten and a half weeks, each participant at no cost will leave with an apprenticeship in construction technology. The other three areas cover three essential necessities, which is socialization skills. As we know, young people are savvy in their own lingo. However, they lack in some instances, socialization skills. So we'll offer that two times a week, three hours per day over thirteen weeks. And that'll be four different semesters, which will cover the full year. The other training aspect is pardon me, is conflict resolution. Outside of conflict resolution, the next one is, of course, socialization, conflict resolution, and anger management. My assessment is, there's a lot of anger amongst younger people. So we can say one thing, we can offer, you know, advice, but the reality is we have to address some of the anger that they are encountering, whatever it may be, single parenting, single households, you know, curriculums in school that don't necessarily speak to what their needs are, social media influence. So what we're looking to do is we're offering all four of these different units of training over thirteen weeks, four different phases over the year, which is, of course, fifty-two weeks covered the year. There's no fee, and we're also offering a stipend for every participant that completes this vocational training and, of course, the other three areas that I mentioned. Additionally, we're hosting what I'm anticipating to be one of the biggest youth summits that's been offered. We're inviting younger people to come and offer their opinion. So my thinking, our thinking is if we're saying, okay, this is where the problem is, I think we should be hearing from the age demographic that we feel not only needs assistance, but that's being expected to, you know, step their game up, so to speak. So the summit is June sixteenth in Harlem, in conjunction with the Children's Age Society. Again, we're allowing them to offer their feedback and opinion on five talking points. On the other side of that is a panel of people we feel that are respected and can offer additional feedback and solutions to some of the talking points. But for the most part, this was last minute for me. I hope I was able to give you guys an idea as to who we are, what we do, and what we're looking to do in terms of the summit. My email is upside zero two seven at Yahoo, if anyone's interested in receiving the digital promotion, which will be available on Friday. And again, that's Larry Lawrence. I prefer Lawrence, but Larry is on my birth certificate. So just to clear that up. Thank you, guys.
You would love to hear more about your services and about that youth summit coming up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anybody with there? Is there anyone present that would like to testify that has not?
They're right here. No one want.
Oh. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Put the microphone a little bit closer so people.
Can I hear you okay?
Yes.
My name is Psycho. It stands for passionate, strong, young, creative, and observant. And I'm the youth development coordinator and youth representative. It's a nonprofit organization that provides legal services for youth.
I know, but it won't work if, did you have a ten minutes?
Everyone mute themselves.
It's a nonprofit organization that provides legal services to youth. You're ordinary.
I'm sorry, can you guys unmute in the office?
Yeah.
All right, we're good.
Hi. So hello, everybody. Once again, my name is Psycho. It stands for passionate, strong, young, creative, and observant. And I'm currently the youth development coordinator and youth representative. It's a nonprofit, it's a nonprofit company, it's a nonprofit organization that gets legal services and directs them to youth that ordinarily wouldn't be able to get them on their own. One of the things that I can say definitely impact a lot of youth is the lack of social awareness, social developmental services that are given to them. And obviously, an abundance of over policing tactics. Youth go through life at a faster rate than we experience growing up ourselves. And this is evident with everything that's going on in the world. It's evident with the lack of mental and emotional services available to people in schools. It's evident with the lack of attention and care that we give to youth, especially incarcerated youth. I feel like that's an issue that is completely underlooked, underfunded, and not taken seriously. When kids are locked up, it's assumed that it's going to happen again and again and again. And the facts prove that it doesn't. We look at them as criminals. We take away their freedoms. We lock them away. And we do everything but address the actual root of what's getting them to these places in the first place, which is simply put, a lack of care from the community and the people, specifically the government, that is supposed to be caring for them. Senators, assembly members, committees, governors, everybody involved, y'all see what's going on. Everybody's always talking about how the youth are out in the streets wilding, want to paint the narrative that it's dangerous to walk around them, but we're not actually taking the initiative to enter their lives in a holistic way, in an intentional way, and a way that doesn't overly criminalize them. So again, we need more attention to mental services. We need more attention to social awareness, socioeconomic services. We need to just be mindful that youths were us, and you made plenty of mistakes too. So all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to testify that has not had the opportunity to testify? If so, please use the raise hand function. Nobody? Great job. So Eduardo, we should we should continue because it's still five. Okay, we're going to continue this hearing till five o'clock, but our other agency partners are free to stay to listen to any other testifiers that may come, or you may feel free to get another half hour back. Thank you for coming. So I'm going to just conclude. So thank you all for taking time out of your schedules to join us and to share your thoughts. It's important to hear directly from the public and to have our members appreciate all your thoughts. And we heard just so many great ideas today and resources. A recording of this hearing will be made available and posted on the DYCD website in the coming weeks. And in closing, happy holidays to you and your family. And in closing, happy holidays to you and your family.
As stated before, there will be a recording available online. Please make sure the information has been forwarded to Eduardo if you'd like any further information. Thank you, guys.
There's a group called Cleaning For U2 that has their hands raised. We could unmute them so they could speak.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I just, I'm Amalicious's mom, and I just want to say, listening to all these beautiful children and the next generation, it was amazing. And I really hope that they can come together and put something together with the adults to help make these streets safer. Because I am out here in these boroughs. I clean for various assemblymen and council members, and those trains are not safe. The mental health issues, they were not addressed. There was tons and tons of money that was put out, and I don't feel like anything happened with that. And I really hope going forward to the new year, that things get better in the streets. It's dangerous. I should not have to be on the train with my child and tell her that it's either going to be them or us because we were threatened to be robbed and hurt by someone who was homeless. Okay, I shouldn't have to teach her that. She should be able to be okay and be on the train. It's really bad out here, you know? And I just hope and pray that, you know, all the crime, everything, I just hope it gets better because it's really bad out here for the people who take the trains and the buses. It's too much, and it's a lot of added stress. But I want to say, I hope and pray that y'all can work with these children. And Assemblyman Cunningham, maybe he can put a bill into law, you know, because he deals with the crime issues. So I'm praying that, you know, something will be set into place for these streets to be safer for our children. Because I don't have any faith and any trust. And if my child is not in my eyesight, I'm just so worried, and it's horrible. And that's why I took her out of school and I put her on inline, on online school, just to know that I could see my child and I know that she's safe. So I just hope it gets better. But I have to say, this was a great forum, and I really, really appreciate it. And like I said, I hope and pray it gets better for 2023. And thank you so much for everyone's time. Stay safe and be well.
Thank you so much for testifying. Is there any other people that wanted to testify? If so, please raise your hand. So we'll just continue to monitor for another sixteen minutes.
Thank you.